So I'm going to call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for May 21st of 2024. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Qudnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next agenda item, number four, is Councilmember Board Reports and Acceptance of Meeting Minutes. So we have our City Council Meeting Minutes from May 7th of 2024 and the Public Works Board from March 14th of 2024. Are there any corrections or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will accept those into the record. Our next agenda item, number five, is the Joint Rock Lake Committee Monthly Report.
Good evening, President Curler and members of the City Council. My name is Pat Stevens, and I am a City Representative on the Joint Rock Lake Committee, and I'm going to be providing a little bit of update for you today. Our Chair is out of town today, so I'm here in her stead. A couple of things I just wanted to pass on. First of all, we do have a new City Council Representative, or, excuse me, a new City Representative on our committee, Lauren Egger. Appreciate that approval of that position. We're delighted to have her on board. She attended her first meeting, and I think she's going to be a great addition, so we appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that one of our priorities continues to be education in regard to issues associated with the lake. In that regard, we continue to write articles and submit those to the leader, and also to get those published on the community website as well. One of the things that you will hopefully be seeing here relatively soon is an article regarding the dam operations and the changes that have been made. One of the things that we think that'd be good to get the word out a little bit more in terms of what the city has done to try to make improvements in terms of the operation of that dam, and also some of the updates that have been made in regard to policy. So again, we'll make sure as we work on that article that we work with the city, and they have an opportunity to review that before we move forward with that, and make sure that we're in agreement in terms of the accuracy of the article. You have also, I'm sure, heard that there's been a group that's been looking at a potential lake district for a rock lake, and I've been involved in that, not in my role as a member of the committee, but separate from that. I did want to pass on to you that a public roundtable has been scheduled now for June 18th here in the Public Community Room. For those of you that might be interested, we encourage you to come and learn something more about that if that's an issue that you're interested in. I think that the format seems to be, basically have a series of tables where folks can learn about different issues associated with that or hear more about that, and hopefully express their opinion. So again, I'd encourage you to consider that if that's something you're interested in. The other thing I wanted to mention is that at our last meeting, the RLIA provided a video and a presentation regarding wake boats. Many of you have probably heard about some of the issues that have kind of been, came to the forefront regarding those boats. Those are boats that have a technology using ballast and other types of instruments to make a large wake, and there's been some concerns about potential impact on fish habitat as you get in shallow water and you kind of blow out the bottom a little bit in terms of the downwash in those boats, and also potential impacts on shorelines. You may have heard that Lake Ripley, I understand, banned that technology, and that raises the question about whether we might have more visitors to our lake that might have that technology as well. So again, that's something that I think we're definitely interested, so stay tuned. Again, just to give you a sense, that has garnered a fair amount of attention. There's been a number of bills introduced in the legislature regarding those boats as well. So again, we'll keep you updated as that issue kind of continues to develop. We also had an update recently from Colton Hutchinson at the County Land and Water Conservation Department at the Jefferson County regarding the potential dredging of the Mill Pond. That's another issue that we're potentially interested in. We know we've got the channel through there and ongoing discussions now regarding other dredging that might be appropriate for that. Also, we had an election last week regarding officers, and I'm happy to give up my position as Secretary in that regard, the Minutetaker. So our new officers that we have now as Winnie is continuing to be Chair, Daniel Smith will be Vice Chairperson, and then Lauren, our newest member, will be serving as Secretary. And then with that, we're also interested in the summary or the studies that have been being looked at in regard to potentially changing the dam order or pursuing a decision to do that. That's something that we've been discussing as well, and we'll continue to focus on that and provide feedback at an appropriate time for you all as that issue develops and those studies go a little bit further along. And also understand that the City Council did provide support for the wetland study associate that's currently going on, and I think that, let's appreciate that as well. So with that, I'll wrap up my comments and be happy to try and answer your questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions for Pat Stevens?
I just have one question, I guess more for Attorney Drescher. Is my understanding any regulation of boats such as weight boats, that would be town ordinance rather than a city regulation? Is that correct?
Yeah, generally with regard to activities on the body of water itself, the town has maintained a majority of the shoreline and therefore has jurisdiction over activities on the lake. As Drake just said, we do run launches, so you could restrict the ability to launch certain size or certain style of craft from launches, but...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is correspondence. Mr. Fields, start with you.
I just had two. I had one on Carrie's campaign, which was a, one of our board members. Her daughter was trying to raise money for the leukemia lymphoma society. And then a thank you from Susan on our supporting of the Resolution 2435 last week, last meeting.
Great, thank you. Mary?
I had just three notes of gratitude for the city and the City Council approving the funding for the required DNR study. That was outstanding.
Okay, great.
Nothing. I have nothing additional. Thank you.
Michelle?
I had the same, and then I did also receive some correspondence about the Cottage Inn.
Thank you, and that's, I also had correspondence on the Cottage Inn and, thank you, on the lake study. Okay, we will move to Agenda Item 7, which is Questions in Public Comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, state your name and address, and fill out the sign-in sheet that's provided at the podium. If there's anyone attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature so that we know you want to comment.
So my name is Leo Kusek. I live at N 5882 Harvey Road. I guess we're the Town of Astalon, but we are at Lake Mills zip code, so. Just a quick comment on Item 11, which is going to be a closed session. So to President Curler and the rest of the members, as a wastewater engineer and as a project manager for Applied Technologies, I wanted to take an opportunity to thank city staff. We interviewed for the municipal engineer role a few weeks ago, and I wanted to thank the staff for their thoroughness and professionalism throughout the RFP process. There's a lot of change that's been going on in Lake Mills in the past couple of years, and there's a big undertaking on the horizon, especially the future of wastewater. And so Drake and his team are taking the decision seriously of which engineers should join the team to help make those decisions. And so I just want to express gratitude to Bill and Judy over at the wastewater treatment plant, to Randy, Duane, to Dan, to Drake, and then even Troy Evenson, who was actually the inspector for our house when we built it back in 2017. So it was a small world after all. So with that, just wanted to thank the city again for the opportunity to propose on the role, and appreciate your time. That's it.
Thank you, Leo. So anyone else that would like to make public comment this evening? Anyone online? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment, and we will move to the City Manager's Report. Drake?
Sure, a few items. It is Public Works Week, so I think tonight's a great night to recognize that, as we do have crews standing by to respond to any storm damage that we have tonight. So if you happen to see any of them throughout the week, please thank them for their service. They serve a vital role in our community, and we're happy to have all of them here with us. I would also like to say, over the last several weeks, the city has received notification that we've received approximately $1.8 million in grants. We received a $400,000 grant for the upgrade of Harvey Road, which was a joint application with the Town of Astalon. Our section would be upgraded to an urban section, whereas then the town would continue a town, a town road further, further down from it. So that project is slated to, not, not to happen until 2027 or later. That was a LRIP discretionary, I believe, is the pot of money that that was awarded. And we also received two STP urban grants, both in the amounts of nearly $700,000. One is for the reconstruction of South CP Avenue from Jefferson Street to Lake Street. That would be a full reconstruction, and then we would coordinate. So it's from, if the new, the new storage units out towards Lake Street. You can kind of see where a former, a different road project occurred, and then it transitions to the lower quality. That's kind of where it would start and continue on. We would also coordinate with utility replacement during that. The, the STP urban grants are close to an 80% funding for the road portion of that project. The utility portion is locally funded. And then we also received nearly $700,000 for the reconstruction of West Lake Street. West Lake Park Place from Ferry to Main. So quite a bit of success there. None of those projects are slated to occur until after 2026, and the funding is anticipated not, that with the, with the funding that's in, so 2026 or later, likely 2027 or later as we build the CIP. So this coming summer, when we're looking at the CIP, we will see a shuffling of some projects as funding pushes projects up on the priority list. But we are very excited to have received some outside funding to complete some road projects, and should help alleviate debt burden as well as help keep us on track with our street reconstruction plan.
Fantastic. Thank you, and your staff for all their work. I know it's, it's a lot of work to put together those grant applications, and it's always nice when we're successful. Any questions or comments? We have a bunch of reports to, that Drake has provided as well. Any questions or comments on those? I'll just add, oh, Mary?
I do have one question. In the financial statement, the way that I look at the formatting, how do you know if you, you're going to make it to year end? Like, how do you know on a quarter, looking at, like, this is the first quarter, we just finished, and you have the annual budget? I know some things I would speculate when you look at the line items. You're expecting a lot more revenue, as an example, for the Sandy Beach and for boat launch fees and that kind of thing. How do you keep track along the way of knowing that you're going to be on track for year end when it's mid, mid-cycle, first quarter, as an example?
Sam, do you want to speak to that?
When you're looking at the report, there's, there should be a percentage. I'm sorry, I don't have the report pulled up at the moment. With Sandy Beach as an example, that one, you're not going to see the revenue come in until after Memorial Day, when the beaches open. You'll see that go up. But there should be a percentage column on the right-hand side.
So, yeah.
That explains what percentage we're at throughout the year.
So Sam has a general idea of when, like, revenue, for example, when revenue is slotted to come in at a given point in time. So if that point in time passes and the revenue did not materialize, she would make me aware that we're trending to be lower on revenue budget, or if expenditures happen throughout the year. Some happen at certain points of the year. So we track when, when those events occur and if they're lining up with what our expectations are. So we have budget to actuals that we run regularly, and we can course correct if we see that they're trending in a direction that we weren't anticipating them to, and the events that we know result in either expenditures or revenue have occurred and they're different than expected.
So the percent is not the percent you expected at the end of April? That's the percent on the annual?
You're right.
That has been taken, taken us through April, the percent that you've seen through April, not the percent of the quarter?
Correct.
Okay, I think.
That is correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misinterpreting the information.
And so maybe just to follow up, it sounds like what you're saying, Drake and Sam, is that a lot of it is based on past experience for different sources of revenue or different expenditures when those typically have occurred in past years, and they're not always, you know, in 12, 12-part increments every month. They're come and go at different times.
Right, like, we know we're not getting any more property taxes, so it shows us 100%. No more is coming from that. But we know we're going to get more park fee revenue, Sandy Beach fund revenue than we have right now, because we've probably collected nearly nothing, if we have collected anything, and we would expect
That to rise.
Post Memorial Day to Labor Day to be the revenue generators there.
And one more follow-up on that. The state, state shared revenue I saw was zero right now. Does that usually come in at the end of June?
Sam, do you remember when we get our state revenue?
I believe it's July.
Because I know they're on a July 1 to June 30 fiscal year, so I wasn't sure. One other thing I wanted to highlight, and I asked Sam about this earlier today by email, but on the second page under miscellaneous revenue, we do have took in about $230,000, and that was the sale of the fire engine, is that right? The sale of
Correct.
Sale of city property. So that was the fire engine that the fire chief had recommended that we sell, and then those dollars would go to, they'll offset the purchase of the new ladder truck.
Correct.
Correct. The, but, when the, but, when we go to do the borrowing on the ladder truck, we will deduct that amount from the borrowing to cover the difference.
Okay, fantastic. Any other questions or comments on the reports? Okay, we'll move along to Item 9, which is our Council Business. The first item is Confirmation of City Council President's Appointment. I have two appointments on this agenda. Greg Polczek for another term on the Public Works Board, and Dan Thousand for another term on the Board of Review.
I'll make a motion to approve the confirmation of City Council President's Appointment of Greg Polczek to the Public Works Board, term ending 2027, and Dan Thousand to the Board of Review, term ending 2029.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters and seconded by Ms. Qudnow. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Qudnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, Letter B, is an update and possible action regarding the Cottage Hotel at 265 South Main Street. Drake, or we have Troy Evenson, our zoning administrator, to give us an update.
Hey, good evening. So today, we actually received the assurance from, from Barry and Drake, and Barry did sign the developers' agreement. So we're right there. He did issue me the building permit. I did not sign it and give it back yet. I'm still kind of going through it. We're still, he did give us some verbal explanation of what he was going to do with the exterior, but I didn't, I kind of wanted to get something in writing, you know, or some sort of plans that indicate exactly what we're going to do with that exterior. That's kind of been a hot topic. So he assured me that we'd get that shortly, but we have everything I think we need to issue it. Technically, I could probably issue it right now, but I think I'm just going to kind of hold it. They're still demoing over there anyway, so we're not really holding up our 18-month deadline that was set in place. So I think we're close.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? I have a question. Michelle?
What's next on the docket?
Well, once we issue the permit, then it's full steam ahead. They can start, you know, the, the main things that need to happen is there's a water main that gets run from Main Street to the house and then to a hydrant in the back. There's, obviously, it's, it's gutted right now. If you guys went in there, it's, it's down to, to the studs. So the complete renovation can begin, and he's got a lot of work to do.
And I'm aware of that, so I'm wondering if there is a way, I know we talked about it at our last meeting, about maybe having like a, a check-in on the progress as it goes, just so that we can be assured that the, the project is, is making its way like it's supposed to.
Sure. I, I can tell you, we were, we knew going into this that this is a topic that was going to be brought forward. Is, is this going to get brought to completion and to everybody's satisfaction? So we, we made sure that all these documents were in place before we're issuing this permit. Once this permit's issued, he really has, you know, I guess we lose a little bit of our teeth that he has a period of, if no work is being done on that property for six months, we can revoke the permit and, and start our process again. But he does have a window there where, you know, if contractors aren't available or something happens, he does have a window where he can cease construction, but it, it's limited to a six-month window according to our ordinance. But I'd gladly, you know, especially on your guys' request, I can stop in there and, and come in and give updates of where it's at and, and help keep you guys informed. It's, it's hard because, you know, the outside is blocking most of what you're, is going to be happening. You know, the outside's probably just going to get new siding here and there, but most of the work, other than the, the main being run to the house from Main Street, is going to be interior work. So it'll be tough for you guys to really comprehend what's going on, but I can easily be the boots on the ground and give you guys monthly or, you know, bi-weekly updates, whatever you want to do.
I wonder if we could get just a notification by email to the council when the permit is issued, so at least we understand that that step has been completed. And then if there's, you know, six months seems like maybe as a appropriate time to find out what progress has been made. Would that be, does that feel good to you, Michelle?
I like the idea of an email as opposed to bringing up as a
Sure.
An item on our agenda. But I, I just want to make it public that it is a concern that he won't be able to meet the requirements of the 18-month developers' agreement. I'm just worried that it's going to be tough, so.
Okay, so we'll have a break, or Troy notifies by email when the permit's issued, and then maybe have this back on the agenda, or, or an email correspondence in six months with a sort of a progress report? Is that satisfactory to everybody?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next agenda item, Letter C, is Resolution 24-36. This is an authorization to borrow funds for TID number five. Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 24-36, Authorization to Borrow Funds, TID number five.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 24-36, Authorization to Borrow Funds, TID number five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Drake, is this you or Sam?
I can give you a quick overview if you have some detailed questions. Sam's here as well. TID number five, this is to make the payments for the Drummond Crossing condominiums, those, the TID incentives that they were eligible for, that the council approved dispersment of. The TID does not have a cash balance, and so the, the incentive is structured as debt. If the, if the value, the promised value doesn't occur, then the developer becomes responsible for the carrying costs of those, of those debt. If we're not generating the increment necessary to make the payments on the debt that we're taking out to finance the incentive, then the developer is on, on the hook for it if they're not meeting their valuations. There's no indication that we're worried about that. Valuations have been where they need to be. So this is an authorization to borrow the funds to make those disbursements. Sam, can you remind me which institution was the lowest?
Bank of Lake Mills.
And we have a memo with the quotes for the interest rates. So, right, the resolution is recommending Bank of Lake Mills for 10-year borrowing. Any further questions for staff? I just have a clarification. I think you said Drummond Crossing, but the memo says White Oak. Is that the same developer?
Oh, did I misspeak? I suppose this one will be for White Oak. It's really both. There's, both of them are obligations of TID 5, so
Okay.
White Oak is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions, then can we have a roll call, please, on Resolution 24-36, which is authorizing borrowing for TID number five?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Qudnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next agenda item is the third reading of Ordinance 1264, which is Amending Chapter 153. Misty, would you do the third reading, please?
Ordinance 1264, Amending Chapter 153, Officers and Employees, Article 5, Neighborhood Service Officer, Section 153-9, Powers and Duties.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve Ordinance 1264, Amending Chapter 153, Officers and Employment, Employees, Article 5, Neighborhood Service Officer, 153-9, Powers and Duties.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, seconded by Ms. Qudnow. Any further comments or discussion? Mr. Fields, you sponsored this, or from staff?
We, nothing that hasn't been stated previously. This expands some of the duties of the Neighborhood Service Officer, mainly the one to issue, to clarify that their authority to issue parking tickets, largely a delegation of authority from the police chief.
Okay, any comments, questions? If not, let's proceed to roll call vote on Ordinance 1264.
Ms. Qudnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Sorry, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, next agenda item is Ordinance 1265. This is the first reading of a petition for annexation. Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City of Lake Mills, Ordinance 1265, Annuating Territory to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
Okay, so that's our first reading of Ordinance 1265. Drake, would you like to give us a little background on this one?
Not unless there's specific questions. It's, it's annexation by request. So we received a petition to be annexed in, and we are able and capable of serving them, and so we are, we're happy to have them.
Mr. Waters, Greg?
It, it made me look up the location for Linden Road. I, Linden Street, I wasn't familiar with it, but now I am, so.
It's a remaining town island, so eventually all of it will be part of the city in the future, but they'll come in as, as property owners request to be annexed in.
Between the cemetery and the optimal physical therapy. I just had one. I just had one comment on the forms that we use. I know it references the municipal boundary agreement for annexations from the town of Lake Mills, but it's my understanding we don't have that boundary agreement any longer. So does that mean that we pay, that we follow the state statute then in terms of paying the taxes for five years?
Yeah, and that's correct. The state statute determines, dictates the cost share there, and that was consistent with the treatment in the municipal boundary agreement. So nothing's changed, but that reference should be removed as the municipal boundary agreement has sunsetted.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments? Okay, so that was our first reading this evening, so that'll be on our agenda next time for a second reading. So that concludes our council business for tonight. Are there any recommendations for future agendas? Anything from council members? We've talked about a goal setting, and so we'll still be, that still is some point in the future for a work session on goal setting. Anything else, Drake, that you want to mention?
None at this time.
Okay. All right, so our next agenda item is to convene into closed session. We're convening into closed session to discuss legal claims pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 1G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved, and to discuss engineering and planning services pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 1E, deliberating or negotiating a public contract when competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to move into closed session?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quidnow. We need a roll call vote on that, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Once we go into, finish closed session, we will reconvene, but we will do that, not on television, so this ends tonight's broadcast. Thank you.